All those meeting orders, please stand for the pledge allegiance and the invitation is called.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Madeline here, Green here, LaFleur.
Here.
Mr. Stradick.
Here.
Ryan Dell.
Here.
Rick.
Here.
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 Good to see everybody here tonight. It's nice to hear Karen's voice again after all these months of COVID meetings on Zoom. Approval minutes for the city council meeting of February 15th would be in order.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Any audience comments on any non-agenda items? Now would be the time. You asked that you would state your name and address to the clerk. Is there anybody that would like to speak to the city council this evening? Thank you. Move on to adoption of the agenda. Mr. City Manager, any changes? No changes. City Council, any changes? A motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Most have been made and supported. Is there any discussion? If you're not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent as presented.
Support. What's been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, which we have seven this evening. The first one being consideration of approving the Pay It Forward banner request. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving a request from Kathy Machowski to hang the banner recommending Pay It Forward Day across Main Street from April 14th to April 28th. Pay It Forward Day is inspired by the movie The Same Name and invites people to perform acts of kindness for others without expecting anything in return. April 28th of each year is Pay It Forward Day. And as a result, Kathy has been before us, this is the second year, asking that we hang the banner for the two weeks prior, so April 14th through April 28th.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I make a motion to approve the request from Kathy Machowski to place the Pay It Forward banner over Main Street for two weeks leading up to Pay It Forward Day from Tuesday, April 14th through Tuesday, April 28th. Support.
What's been made and supported. Any discussion? Any audience participation?
Not.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number two is consideration of special event request Vintage Road Trip Market. Market. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to review a special event request from Floris Trash to Treasure to hold the Vintage Road Trip Market and More event on May 15th and the 16th from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Floris Trash to Treasure, Melissa Hatriak and Kimberly Schonberg are also submitting a special event. Mobile food vendor request for three to five mobile food vendors. The market itself would be similar to the markets that my job peaks, Michonne job peaks and Kathy Alpholov run the last couple of years in April and July. One of the exceptions is that the location of the market would change. They would be more where the Chris Pringle market was that two years ago at Christmas time in between the two buildings versus out on the side street and then the area of parking over there. So with that, they'll be able to keep the streets open and will not require any street closures. Due to the amount of traffic that this could generate, we still would request that council consider removing some of the on-street parking just to keep that area of town moving. Another change is that this would be a jury market and that the vendors would need to apply. This will help them kind of keep the quality of the vendors more under control. And then along with their event application, they did submit an event application for mobile food vendors. Have three to five mobile food vendors in discussions with Melissa. They were thinking, you know, one to two that would serve just food and then two to three that would be more novelty, elfiniers, ice cream, that sort of thing. So with that, administration's recommendation is for approval. Again, we do have the extra motion in there for the on-street parking for the event as well as the motion for the food vendors is a separate motion. And I believe that Melissa Hatriak may be here tonight to answer any questions you have.
Definitely am.
Melissa, if you'd like to take the time now to address council on this?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your time this evening. This event is something that we would really like to do and make an annual event, not only for our little end of town, but the hope is, is that it would grow from, I'm hoping to get 50 vendors this year, and it'll just grow from there. Right now, we're looking at this being the only market that we would want to do right now and make it more of a destination type market. These markets really pull a lot of people, especially with COVID and all of the craziness. Open-air markets are tending to be the way that things are going rather than indoor markets or more enclosed markets. With that, we feel that we have the ability to do a jury market and really draw a great crowd. We did do a vintage road trip market just before the holidays and included four stores, both local and in the surrounding areas, and we had an amazing turnout. So we're really hoping that we can build on that and bring lots of people to Richmond that have never maybe stepped in our little town or don't know what we have to offer. As far as the food vendors, part of my concern is with COVID, our restaurants do not have the seating capacity that they get in the past. We're looking at all finger food. We're not looking at doing a seating area for the food or anything like that. So it would be all like grab and go as they continue to walk and stroll through the community. And then the hope is, is that they'll still be hungry and go visit our restaurants and that they may have the capacity to seat at least some people. Currently, they're at 25% and not knowing if it'll go up from there or not. It's a little scary that I might have, if we get 50 vendors, you figure each tent has about two people, sometimes three, depending on the size of their area. So we could be looking at about 100 to 150 vendor people that we also need to feed on top of whoever's attending the market. So like I said, we want to build on this and make it a yearly annual event. The weekend after Mother's Day, we feel like the weather might be a little bit more stable for us than going earlier in the spring. So with that, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Council, any questions at this start?
Yes, I have a question. The time period for both days, the way the application is written, it says, "May 15th, 2021, 7:00 a.m. through May 16th, 21:00 and 5:00 p.m." I assume that that's each day 7 to 5, which is kind of in our background brief.
Right.
And if that's the case, I was just wondering why you wouldn't want to go longer, especially on Saturday? Because I know, I would think that people would really want to go all the way till sundown perhaps. Even the vendors, I know, try to get as much business as they can. Just wondering.
And that's something we could definitely explore in the future. The 7:00 a.m. time we figured for start to set up, and it is a really long day for the vendors. So a lot of times, they're looking to get out and go get something to eat and go home and relax. It's a long day for them, especially when they're hauling stuff that is either, you know, vintage or artsy or that kind of stuff. So it's a, it's a long setup day. The reason I put the time like that is because that's kind of the period that we're going to need the municipal lot. You know, so between setup and tear down and that kind of stuff, definitely it is something that as we go along, we can ask the vendors like what they would be open to. I don't have a problem with it being later in the day if my vendors are willing to stay. But the way that we would word their contracts is that they have to stay for the hours that that we would be open to the public, and then we can kind of build on that. Being a first-year market, we kind of have structured it after some of the other markets that are in the area or the bigger markets that happen throughout the state. Luckily, we have quite a few to pull from. They have a huge market in Davidson. They have one at the Patrick Priven Browns. That's a two-day market. Several others in the area that we could kind of look at their hours and what they do and kind of put it after that. But I do agree with you. I think that there is, you know, as a business local in town too, I stay open a little later, a couple of nights a week just to catch the evening business. So I know what you're saying, especially with the nice weather and people can't get out. So it is definitely something we would consider in the future.
Yeah, that's all. I was just, didn't want to stop the vendors from, they're having good business, then to shut them down. Because I know that they always, a lot of vendors, because I deal with vendors as well, for Good Old Days, that they want to stay as long as they can. And so, and it would be good, I think, for the town too to have people staying around.
For sure.
Visiting the businesses that are open in the restaurants.
Did you have a question?
I just have a question on, for clarification of a definition for the mobile food vendor. Because it says here, like one or two, like food, and then snacky. Would the snacky be like a popcorn stand or nuts, like somewhat similar to what we have at Good Old Days? Or?
Snacky was, at least when I talked to Melissa, it was more elfiniers, the type of stuff that you wouldn't necessarily eat lunch, but it would definitely be a food truck.
So I'm just, because that's the reason asking for three to five, so it wasn't a food truck, but that's why you wanted more?
And that was something I was looking, going to ask you guys about for clarification too, because like I've got somebody local that does soups and grilled cheese. I have a guy that does coffee, but he's got like a Volkswagen type setup, you know, where he brings his little Volkswagen bus. You know, I would love to have like maybe the Rotary or the Lions Club come in and do some, you know, food, whatever. Yeah, I've even thought about going down and talking to Georgia Maria at Village Cafe because they did the barbecue outside on the side of their building when they had to be closed. So they've obviously got the setup for it, but they don't have a per se truck. So, and that was, you know, part of my three to five because I don't know what is, does it have to physically be a food truck or is it any food type vendor?
If you want, I'll give the definition that we talked about at council during when we developed this. If the food is eaten on-site, it's a mobile food vendor. If the food is designed that you buy it, like somebody makes jams and jellies, they're more of a vendor that's just selling as one of your 50 vendors. You know, you're not going to open up a can of jelly and eat it there.
Or pre-made?
Or like the pickles. You know, that's a, more of a craft that they're doing and selling it as a craft versus an elfineer, anything that can be eaten on-site.
So even like a cotton candy would be a food vendor?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
So I, okay.
Any, any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event request from Floris Trash to Treasure to hold the Vintage Road Trip Market and More event on May 15th and 16th, 2021, from Sunday onto Friday, in municipal parking lot in the area between the two buildings.
What's been made and supported. Any other discussion? I'm glad that they've stepped up and taken over. It is a great event and it's done properly. I believe it brings a ton of people to town. And if we can re-establish a great jury show, I believe that that will definitely be something that people will afford each year and maybe more than once a year in the future. So I appreciate Melissa stepping forward with this. Any other comments? Any other public comments?
Not.
Okay, back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have another motion for the street parking.
Can I ask a question before a motion is made? Do we have parking on both sides of Monroe and Parker? Because I see it.
Now?
Yes.
Yes.
So is, is there a reason we wouldn't want to just shut down parking on both sides?
Because, well, previously, because there's enough room there to get cars through. There's not enough room for two-way traffic or even close to it when there's cars parked on both sides, especially in the curve around Monroe.
So by being on one side, you at least have parking available, some parking there. So people can park there and then walk to the other. But as the mayor said, when you got two.
No, I was just wondering why we don't close it down for both sides, but.
To leave some parking for, for the event, yeah. Some parking is possible. Motion, please?
Make motion to remove parking from the west side of Parker, street between Monroe and Water Streets, and remove parking the south side of Monroe Street between Parker Street through 3536 for Monroe Street on Saturday, May 15th and Sunday, May 16th from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Support.
What's been made and supported. Any discussion on this item?
No, thank you for the clarification on that.
Any audience comments? Don't believe so. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have another motion for the special event application for the mobile food vendor. Is there a motion?
I'd like to motion to approve the special event request from Floris Trash to Treasures to allow three to five mobile food vendors during the Vintage Road Trip Market and More event on May 15th and 16th, 2021, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in the municipal parking lot.
Support.
What's been made and supported. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think we have the different food vendors and different things. I think this could bring more people. And I think it's the whole idea just to walk around and snack and hopefully that will stir interest to go have dinner somewhere and stay in town and go to that thing.
I agree with you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, yes, I, I agree completely with the councilor Forrest's comments that I was concerned about having opening up to five, but I'm okay with that as long as it is kind of a diverse mix of food vendor type things and doesn't take away a lot from our current restaurants in town. And with, we don't know what COVID is going to be like, so we'll need options for people to be outside eating on the fly there. I know that people like to come if they're at one of these kinds. It's more of a festival atmosphere and they looking for something to grab right away as opposed to going to the restaurant. However, some people will do that, of course. And then after the event's over, if it doesn't, if I, probably plenty of opportunity for people to do that as well. So I'm okay with that. Now, I know when we talked about this before, that we would potentially have the opportunity that they would actually come back and tell us what type of food vendors there are.
Yeah, we would have. I mean, I know on the application, we don't know yet because it's
early in the planning process, but do we have a way to handle that so that we would know?
In the past, we talked that if you approved it like you're doing tonight where you're approving it so that she has the right to go out and solicit, we can have it that as she gets them, she submits them to me and I can get them to council.
Okay. I wouldn't like that, except that's the spirit of what we passed. And I remember it wasn't just allowed. And then once they get through, they can bring whatever they want.
In the future, I'll try to draft the resolution to state that. I should have done that tonight, but certainly that was, I know there was that discussion at council level that sometimes you may have to approve it so that they have the rights, I'm speaking to go out and try and get food vendors. She may not be able to get three to five over her. So I can certainly, as she gets them, work with Melissa to get Melissa to council.
Yeah. And then I guess the last comment was just because it's due to Melissa's efforts to do this. It's their event to bring people in town. So I think that they should be given some priority and ability to add some things to the event to make it successful. And if that involves food vendors that are diverse, then I think that's, that's a good thing.
Anybody else?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may. At first, I was slightly concerned about three to five food vendors considering the amount of space, you know, the event taking place in the municipal parking lot. But I do like the idea of, after hearing Melissa speak and share some more of her ideas, you know, possible smaller vendors. And also, I'm very pleased that she's willing to reach out to local establishments to include that and make this more of a community event. So I'm comfortable with the three to five under those conditions.
Where do I start? Of course, I have not been, you know, advocate of these mobile vendors. I believe specialty items, the event is that type of an event, hopefully, that specialty items would enhance the event. I believe in just the opposite, that, you know, the state has said our restaurants can only hold 25%. Let's make sure that we have 25% filled in those restaurants that are directly across the street. It's one thing if we weren't, you know, if we didn't have those restaurants right there. But I've been part of a bigger festival that has said, "We're going to do everything we can to keep these mobile food vendors." We have state licenses because they're on a state highway. They can go just about wherever they want to, unless it's on private property. We've always told vendors, "Stay away from our restaurants as far as you can possibly get because it's unfair for you to compete against them during our events during the Good Old Days Festival." I don't see this as any different other than if you want to have some of the things that Melissa brought up, the coffee person, you know, even the, I know the lady that does the specialty cheese sandwiches. We have her during Good Old Days. That's kind of a specialty thing. But I think we should leave the restaurant-type food to the restaurants in the hope that we can help them. And in my opinion, we hinder them and it's unfair competition to bring in these mobile food vendors to our established businesses. The cotton candy was mentioned, elfiniers, funnel cake, people, that I have no problem with. That is not something you can buy at those local restaurants. And maybe you have somebody that serves the hot dogs, hamburgers on the side also. Because there is, it's a very good point. There's a lot of vendors. If, if she's successful, there will be a lot of vendors alone that need to eat. So they're going to need something very quick and that maybe our locals can't handle that type of ordering. Also, it seems as though, you know, we're in, you know, hopefully progressing towards a higher percentage of restaurant use versus that 25% where we're at right now. So as that, hopefully, we progress, we are going, our restaurants are going to be allowed to open like most of the states around us, I guess. And they're not going to have that much of a restriction in the 25%. So they will be able to handle more people. And I think we should be enhancing that rather than detracting from that with food that people didn't get in our parking lot or in our pocket park. So I would be against the motion the way it's stated. Hope for the best for, for this event, absolutely. But I don't believe there's a necessity to have regular foods being served by mobile food vendors. Any other comments?
Just a question on the regular foods, like would you, like a vegan, gluten-free, dairy-free, Korean beef type taco?
It's a specialty.
Right. And I guess, I guess that's what I'm seeing that she would bring in for, that would draw, because they draw a unique type of crowd that I really hope to see at the event. And that's, in my experience of food trucking, is I usually don't see a Kony type food truck that is really successful. It's those niche type of food vendors that have that following. So that's what I'm hoping she sees. And I appreciate the support and Dennis making the motion.
But that's not what the motion says, is it?
But we still are going to be able to, she's going to bring a list back to us.
Okay. Is that what the administration is planning on doing? I know we just had a conversation about it, but it's not part of a motion.
It's not part of the motion.
Is the administration going to?
I was planning on giving you a list that you could at least.
Look at it before they contract with them?
No, not, okay, just a list to tell us that this is who's probably correct.
And I, and I completely see your point, Mr. Mayor. But at the same time, the event coordinator is a member of our EDC. She lives in the community. So she wants to work with us and knows what our, and your desire is to, for the vision of it. So I don't want to do it.
I agree with you. But it's also a business. What if we can't get those specialty groups? But you can get the guy that sat here in this meeting one day and told us he took $800 on his mobile food vending unit out of Crawswell during their, whatever that was called, their event that they have there. He sat right here and told us that.
Yeah.
No?
That was one of.
Well, I can give you sites in Lexington also where they're, you know.
I can see.
They've heard a lot of businesses. You know, that, that, I'm just telling you why I would be against this. If it's regular food, I am against it completely. If it's specialty items, then I can see why she's doing it. It will draw people to a point. But I have a real concern with our, our established restaurants that are right across the street. I mean, we're taking money straight out of their hands and they so desperately need it. That's just my opinion. I mean.
I just, I have one more comment on it too. I understand completely too. But since, it's one, it's two days, and I know we can have more people come with other days if they have an event too. But it is in the fact that people are only there for, well, generally not only. But their main purpose of coming to it is because this event is happening. So I think it's, it's a one event. So those restaurants would, I think, get additional business because of it, even if there are food vendors there, especially if they're specialty. Some people may not like those and if you're going to make a whole day enrichment, so they'll go to those restaurants. So it's really hard to quantify either way how it's going to hurt. But I think by having the event is going to help everybody regardless. If we didn't have the event at all, those restaurants would still have their regulars come in, maybe some people that happen to be in town otherwise. But the event is really helping. Well, I look at it, everybody, even those businesses, it's helping, it's helping the food vendors that come. But it's helping the people stay on-site, grab something, eat, go down to the other side of the parking lot. Maybe they haven't got to yet, or stick around later and do it. So it's, that's why I think it's important for the event to bring as many people in and have food there right away. And some people won't go, they'll go to the restaurants. I don't know. It just seems like, make the event as big as possible. I know we haven't, it seemed to be too big when we had it a few years ago, but I think we're ready for that now. So I, I think it's good for everybody. And I do feel for the businesses, but I look at it like it's going to help them, even if there is some on-site food. Because I know Melissa will be looking for specialty, distinct type vendors and would hopefully not have one of those ones that was a hot dog place or something. So anyway, but that's my feeling. And would hopefully not have one of those ones that was a hot dog place or something. So anyway, but that's my feeling.
Anything else? Is there any public comments?
Not.
Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? One nay. Motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of bid award Rich Street overlay contract. Mr. City Manager?
The two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget includes funds for the mill and overlay of Rich Street. The project also includes A D A ramp replacement where necessary and degrading improvements of the home or trail crossing. The city received transportation improvement program, TIP funding, to cover eighty percent of the project, so the local match is only twenty percent. And administration is recommending that you approve the little bidder who is James P. Contracting. This project is, because of the TIP funding, will be run and paid through and out.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make motion.
Motion to authorize the expense of forty-one thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars for the mill overlay of Rich Street to James P. Contracting, who is a spokesperson of the major street fund, Catmull Group.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Is there any discussion on this? Is there any audience comments on this item?
No.
Jim, you have nothing to say? I'm sorry, I didn't see you standing up there.
No, if there's no questions, I have nothing to add.
Okay. Council, any other questions, comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four is consideration of approving resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash oh five E D S grant program. Mr. City Manager?
The city of Richmond is eligible for a transportation grant program through the Economic Development Fund for road improvements in cities and villages with a population of ten thousand or fewer. We had recently submitted for this grant program a couple of years ago for the thirty-one mile road, and we did not receive it there. We are trying to receive it for Burke Drive. And so we recommend that you adopt resolution two thousand twenty-one dash oh five that will allow us to apply for that grant.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-one dash five to authorize the city manager to act as agent on behalf of the city to request the T E D F category B program funding.
Support.
What motion been made and supported? Could I add to that motion, Jamie, on the end of the T D F category B program funding for Burke Drive?
For Burke Drive, yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion? Any audience comments on this? Jim?
I've just added, this is the city manager stated, we have applied for this grant in the past. It is very competitive, but there's a, it's relatively simple application to submit, and there's no cost, if you will, to the city to submit it. So it's certainly it's just an opportunity for the city to potentially get grant funding to assist with our road projects.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Jim while we get him on the stand here? Be or not, thank you. Is there anybody else?
Not.
Thank you. Back to the table. Any other discussion or comments? Be or not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five. Consideration of approving special event request, white cane sale, Richmond Lions Club. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider the requests received from the Richmond Lions Club to conduct the annual white cane sale on Friday, April twenty-third and Saturday, April twenty-fourth. The Lions Club in the past has submitted their paperwork in accordance with our soliciting ordinance. The one thing I would say on the motion, if you go down to the very last line, liability waiver, and you go off one line, it should be Friday, April twenty-third there, and I think it says something else.
Twenty-six.
Yes.
So the other dates in the motion are correct, I believe. It's just that one.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the requests received from the Richmond Lions Club to conduct their pitfall paper sale at intersections of Main and Division and Common Road and the St. Clair Highway city side on Friday, April twenty-third and Saturday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, from dawn to dusk. Further, the Lions Club agreed not to be in the Main and Division intersection on Friday, April twenty-third, from two-thirty p.m. to three-thirty p.m. And further, that the Lions agreed to sign a liability waiver.
Support. What's been made and supported? Any discussion on this? We hope for good weather for it. Is there any audience comments on this? Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to item number six, consideration of board appointments. Mr. City Manager?
The city council has several board appointments before each night. We've received applications. Excuse me, from Marilyn Frank for the Board of Review, Mike Kaminsky for the Board of Zoning Appeals, and Kevin Nish and Teresa Olson for the Personnel Board.
Thank you. I would ask that you would confirm the reappointment of Marilyn Frank to the Board of Review. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Marilyn Frank to Board of Review for a three-year term with expiration date of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion on this item? Appreciate her coming back after one year of being on the Board of Review. Any audience comments on this item?
Not.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have another motion for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I make a motion to appoint Mike Kaminsky, the Board of Zoning Appeals, for a three-year term with the expiration date of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Is there any discussion on this item? Michael's been on Z D A for the last couple of years now, I believe.
Yes.
Was there a new law that asked for a planning commission number to be on Z D A a few years?
Correct, correct. And he was appointed from the planning commission. So that takes care of that also, that we would still have a board number. Yep.
Okay. Is there any audience comments on this?
Not.
Thank you. Back to the table. Michael fell ill when he got a call the other day from his wife, and he's back home again, and we wish him well. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have another item for Personnel Board. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to reappoint Kevin Nish to Personnel Board for a three-year term with the expiration date of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Support.
What's been made and supported? With Kevin, any discussion? He's served that role for at least a year now, I believe. Glad to see he's come back. Any audience comments on this item?
Not.
Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also have one more item here for Personnel Board. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Teresa Olson to the Personnel Board for a three-year term with expiration date December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion on this item? Carrie, Carrie's been on the Personnel Board for a few years now.
I'll have confirmation for.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Appreciate her coming back again. Any public comments on this item?
Not.
Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We thank all for it. Our final item is consideration and confirmation of the fire chief. Now that we've made him sit through the whole meeting. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider confirming the appointment of Curtis Spence as fire chief for the city of Richmond. According to the charter, the council confirms the appointment of the fire chief, who was selected by the department as long as the, as long as it remains a volunteer department. Members of the Richmond Volunteer Fire Department held an election on Wednesday, February seventeenth, and elected Curtis Spence to be the chief for a one-year term commencing on March first, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. Chief, do you have some comments?
It's been a quick couple of years. After the start of the third year for me as chief, looking forward to pushing forward and trying to get involved in some grants that can do equipment and upgrade. It's going to improve everything, so to say.
Thank you, thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to confirm the appointment of Curtis Spence as fire chief for the city of Richmond in accordance with section seven one-three of the city of Richmond Charter for a one-year term commencing on March first, two thousand twenty, and expiring on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Discussion?
That's why I take a second to thank Gary Rotasi. Stepped down as an officer this year, a servant in various roles in the department, including chief for over twenty years. Very fills time to step aside and fortunately, Rob Trent, a veteran member of the department with over thirty years' service, stepped up to fill Gary's spot. So it's a good transition in that position for our department.
We definitely appreciate everybody having stepped up again. I see Tommy Durantis back in to the fold there with your organization, which is always good to see. He was a great chief at one time. Curtis, we appreciate your sacrifices for the last two years. It doesn't seem like two years ago that you stood before us and harassed you a little bit. It's just time's flying here, but you've done a good job, and we appreciate the communications that you've had back to the city manager, who of course distributes that information back to us. So we look forward to another year of working with you.
Thank you. And just to touch on what Rob had said, you have a couple of guys that jumped back in the ranks that have prior experience as an officer, so that's going to help us with their experience, especially with the number of years in the department. And I thank you too, Gary Rotasi, for his service over the years as an officer and chief.
Absolutely. Any other public comments?
Not.
None? Okay, back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Again, thank you and thank you, officers, on behalf of the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Just leave these banners from the city manager, sir.
Just very nice to see everyone tonight, and I have no other comments.
Okay. Council comments, go around the table. Dennis?
Uh, nothing.
Gene?
Uh, just it's good to see you guys again, and I wish you all well and physically here.
Rob?
Nothing.
Emily?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Got to skip you. John?
Nothing.
Mr. Mayor brought down.
Yes, uh, yeah, it's good to be together again. I really liked it. I know we all do, a lot. Um, we've had a real good hour of workshop in place already, so and looking forward to the second half here coming up.
Absolutely. You're here. Okay, I'll go to the calendar real quick. Today being March first. Our library board will be meeting at seven o'clock on the eighth, one week from tonight. That will be Zoom, as far as we can tell.
Yes, I'm following that, yeah.
Also, our table commission on the ninth at seven o'clock will be virtual. And our B Z A and our planning commission on the eleventh will be meeting, and that, as far as we can tell right now, will also be virtual. That's all open to the public. Go to the city's website, and it can lead you on how to be involved in those meetings, or at least be able to watch those meetings. Yes. Happen. Don't forget to change your batteries as daylight savings time before the council meets on the fourteenth. So it's very important that you check your batteries. And then, of course, two weeks from tonight on the fifteenth will be our next regular meeting. The city council met at six o'clock tonight to have their January workshop. Although, public, we couldn't meet, we felt it was very important to meet face-to-face on some very important items. And so they will be going back into workshop settings since we didn't get all of our discussion done. But before we do that, we need to go into closed session under this meeting. So we would need a motion to move to closed session.
I make a motion to convene into closed session in accordance with section eight D of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act two sixty-seven of nineteen seventy-six, as amended, to consider the purchase of leased or real property as requested by administration.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussions? Roll call, please.
Green?
Yes.
Before?
Yeah.
The Stravich?
Yes.
Ryan Bell?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Motion does pass. We will go into closed session. Do you have a motion to move back into open session? Do I have a motion?
Oh, no. Supported.
Motion by Dennis, supported by John. We're back in open session.
No.
Was there any other business of the city council at this time? Be or not, motion adjourned, be in order.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
What's been made and supported? There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion is adjourned.